I ask the people who are presenting to please go up to the podium and state your name nice and clearly because we are being televised tonight. And so I'd like the viewing audience, as well of all, as all of us, to know who you are and to be able to hear this report. It's very important to the town. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. My name is Maureen Schlebeck. I'm an associate and senior project manager with McMahon Associates. With me tonight is Colleen Madeiras. She's our senior traffic engineer on this project. So we're happy to be here and tell you about the progress that we've made on this project since we started back in November. Okay. The purpose of this study is to do a transportation master plan on the Route 28 corridor. And really what we want to do is address all the users of the corridor. So we're going to address the motorists, the pedestrian, the bicyclist, the transit user, and work towards improvements for all of those users, as well as look at issues such as signage and parking, truck routes, et cetera. The project team is being led, as you know, by your town manager, Julia, and we're working with Brian and Marlene in the planning department, Peter in engineering, and Raymond at the DPW. We've kind of worked together on a lot of these issues, just even in the beginning, as we're doing existing conditions. From the McMahon side, Colleen and I are the day-to-day face of the project, and we're supported by staff of planners, traffic engineers, and highway designers. So you can see in this slide, the study area of Route 28, where we start, if we start in the southern end at Locust Street and we head northerly, I love that the Route 28 has numerous names as you go along. So we go from Main Street to Falmouth Heights Road, Davis Straits, T-Ticket Highway, all the way up to Maravista Avenue Extension, where we end our study area. As we've gotten into the study and come to understand a little bit about Route 28, we realize that it's serving two functions. It's serving both as a state highway and the major north-south route through the town, but it's also serving as a local Main Street, serving your village area and linking to your downtown. So as we develop the transportation master plan, we'll be cognizant of both of these functions and address them. The project presents numerous opportunities. There's already a lot of good things out on Route 28, but there's a lot that can be built upon. And there's also a lot of projects being planned, as you know. You have your water line, your sewer projects, there's a bikeway study being done. So one of the opportunities that we see for this transportation master plan is to bring those projects and studies together under one focus and to coordinate on construction as well. There is also an opportunity to expand upon the wayfinding efforts that are done, and we'll talk more about that later in the presentation, to improve upon parking and to do some green initiatives in terms of sustainable improvements. We've broken our study up into four tasks, and I'll walk you through each of these tasks. Our focus to date has mostly been on tasks one and two, and we'll walk you through all the findings that we found on existing conditions. So our first task really is to understand what's out there. And what we've done is collected numerous traffic counts from the Cape Cod Commission and the town sources, looked at crash data. We've already gone out and looked at what's available for parking, and we've done field reviews and looked at prior studies. As we move into task two, we really want to identify the issues of the corridor and start to understand how things operate out there. So this is where we get into looking at levels of service for various modes of transportation, understanding where the high-crash locations are, looking for missing links in terms of where the pets and bikes are being served, and your parking shortfalls. Task three is really the meat of the project, probably the most exciting task, where once we understand what the issues are, we begin to come up with solutions. And again, we'll touch on all the aspects that we talked about before, whether it be signing, parking, truck routes, and we will always focus on multimodal. We'll look to every user on that roadway. And then our last task will be to bring all our findings together in the form of a transportation master plan. So as you can see, we're kind of straddling tasks one and two right now, and we'd like to just walk you through what we have collected to date. We'll give it to you in more or less a brief summary, but anything that you want us to expand upon, we're happy to do so. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Colleen to walk through some of the existing conditions.
As Maureen stated, my name is Colleen Madeiras. I'm a senior traffic engineer with McMahon Associates and a licensed professional engineer, and I'm also actually a resident of Falmouth. So this project's very important to me as well. First off, what we did when we looked at existing conditions was we gathered what's already been done for previous studies. There's a lot that's kind of going on right now. Some of those included the Springbars Road Assessment that was done by Cape Cod Commission. There's a previous transportation master plan that was done in the early 90s, which is a little bit outdated at this point. That was actually for the whole town, whereas now we're just looking at our Route 28 corridor. So we're going to get a little bit more detail than that study. Also, there's the functional design report for the current intersection improvement project up by CVS that's under construction. We reviewed that data, as well as other various, the CVS traffic study, Atria traffic study. Now, there's also a couple other studies going on right now in conjunction with us. As you know, the Bike Ways is doing an update with Cape Cod Commission. Cape Cod Commission is also going to be starting a Davis Straits study, and also the sewer line project, as we know, is kind of in the permitting process right now. And that is in conjunction, it's along Route 28, within our study area. So we've attained all this data, and we're looking at it in conjunction. So this is our study area, and this graphic is roadway classification. And if you notice, the line in blue, that's our study area, and that, Route 28 is classified as a principal, urban principal arterial, and also we noted the existing speed limits on that road. And basically, what this graphic is just showing is the needs of the road. It's serving both a regional function, providing, you know, Route 28 serves all of Cape Cod, providing connections to the east, as well as on a local side, provides connections for residents into all the local land uses. So we need to be aware of the function of this roadway and balance the needs. Here, this is just some of the major points of interest along the corridor and land uses. There's a lot of different land uses going on, from commercial and retail, to a lot of the bunch of elementary schools, law and seminos around here, too. And then while in the downtown area as well, and a lot of tourism. So there's a lot of needs to be balanced. And this slide just shows the existing designated truck routes, which really just correlate to the state-owned portions. As you can see, oh, sorry, wrong button. This right here, that's where the Mast dot owns this section, and then starting at Falmouth Heights Road all the way down to Locust, that's town-owned portion. So basically, the truck routes are designated for on the state road portions. Here, we're looking, this shows where we did traffic counts. We did them at, Cape Cod Commission did them last summer at nine of the intersections. We have nine study area intersections. They performed them throughout between June and August. And as you know, in pink, we have two intersections, the Gifford and Jones with Kuna Mesut, and Locust here at the Queens Byway. Those were, the Peter and engineering are going to be counting those again for us because the Cape Cod Commission wasn't able to get that data. We have old data for this intersection from the Atria study, but it's not, we'd like to get it updated, and we will once the snow melts. Hopefully, soon, it'll be safe enough for someone to get out there to count, and then we'll look to seasonally adjust it because our study is looking at summer peak periods. And then now, this graphic shows daily volumes. So in addition to the intersection counts Cape Cod Commission did, they also placed eight ATRs on the Route 28 corridor. An ATR, if you aren't familiar, it's the tube in the road when you drive over. That collects just volumes on a daily basis. They did that for a 48-hour period in June at eight locations. And this is just a summary of those daily volumes that were observed. And as you can see, the highest area is up here by Maravista Av Extension at about 18,000 vehicles per day. And one other item of note that we noticed is Jones Road's carrying about 13,000, but you also see down here, Main Street is also carrying about a similar volume. So those two are acting as a pair to provide connections back and forth between the two different spines of 28. So that's an important connection. So this graphic shows what the counts look like over that 24-hour period from that ATR. This is not Falmouth, but we threw this in here. This is, we did one in Randolph, and this is kind of just to show you, this is what a typical suburban commuter town looks like. And the major item we want to point out is there's two distinct peak periods, and in the middle, traffic dies down. So you'll see this little peak periods, but when we look at Falmouth, it's a little bit of a different scenario. This is the one we're going to focus on first, up here by Maravista Ave. As you can see, traffic does peak starting in the morning, but it stays there throughout the day. And again, this is in June, so it's during the summer. There's, you know, a lot of people here enjoying all we have to offer. So what we want to take away from this, though, is there are, we know the heavier periods is in the afternoon, where everything kind of comes together, everyone's out on the road. But what's important is the improvements that we will be looking, and the solutions we'll be looking to identify, will not only serve those peak periods, but will serve the majority of the day during those peak periods. And here's just another snapshot. This is down by the Plaza at Springbars Road. Again, same thing. Heavy, and that's a heavy commercial area. You got Walmart and Christmas Tree. And now we're going to look downtown. This is by Shore Road, right around here, the same thing. And this is a heavy tourism spot, too. Now this graphic, now we're looking at the peak period turning movement counts that happened at the intersections, and we're just summarizing what happened there along the corridor. The major point of interest is to note the directional change. So in the morning, we have a lot of people coming into town, as you can see with this 900 versus the 400, and especially here at the hospital lights. There's a very big variation, but we all know that's kind of because of the hospital steamship. And then downtown's a bit more of an even situation. This is during the PM peak hour in the summer, what happens. Some of the intersections kind of have a balanced flow, balanced flow in and out of town. Some have a little bit of, you see the opposite of what we saw in the morning. People are now going back to their other, I guess, these are the people that work in Falmouth and now going home. But in some areas, we see the balance again. And overall, these, as we saw in the bar charts, the PM peak hour is higher than the morning peak hour. So we not only looked at, as Maureen stated, the vehicle, we also looked at pedestrian and bicycles. And so these graphics are going to summarize those. As you can see, these are the pedestrian counts at the intersections. We all know that they're out there today. These are just a snapshot during that peak hour. We know that there could be others during, you know, throughout the day. The major point is down here, downtown, where it starts to get busy. This is the afternoon, and again, we see a bigger, bigger change down here. So, and then some of the other intersections. These are bicycle volumes from the counts. What we see here is they're, again, concentrated more in the downtown area. Also, we saw them closer, when you get closer to the bike path, they get a little bit higher. And one thing of note here is there really isn't any bicycle accommodations today. So these numbers probably will be increasing should any improvement start to come. And as we see in the afternoon, definitely gets higher. And one other thing of note is this area where there is a higher volume tends to be a little bit more inviting for a bicyclist because it's lower speed. You have on-street parking, you have pedestrians, so people are a little bit more aware of slowing down. We saw the volumes are not as high as up here. So it's a little bit more inviting in this area right now, and so maybe that's what's attracting, obviously, because there's also a lot of, you know, summer homes and a lot of destinations in this area as well. This slide is a snapshot of the existing conditions. So this is like my bread and butter right here. So we take all the traffic volumes, we put them into our software, and we analyze. And this is a summary, and we call that a level of service. And that level of service is based on, it's different for a signalized versus a unsignalized intersection, but it's based on the vehicle delay that you experience at that intersection. And it's a grading system, similar to school, A through F. And as you can see in our legend, A is noted in green, and as you get worse, we noted the Fs to be in red. And as you can see, we're seeing a lot of yellow and red, so there's a lot of operational issues in the summer. We're seeing a lot of these summer study area intersections. And we're not also just looking at operations, we're looking at congestion. There's also queuing, which can create problems spilling back into other intersections. But this is the snapshot of how these intersections are currently operating. So not only did we look at traffic volumes and the congestion, we also look at safety. And this slide right here looks at the safety at those nine study area intersections. This data is based on the latest three years from Mast dot. And as you can see, the top number is based on, that's the total number of crashes over the three years. The bottom is noted the number of accidents that had injury. And then we noted in yellow, some of the intersections are above average with the crash rate. And the crash rate was calculated, it's based on not only the number of crashes, but also correlates to the number of traffic at that intersection. And we compared those two. Mast dot has state averages, and that's where the above averages came from. And then we not only looked at intersections, we looked at the segments in between, because that tells a lot, too. And as you can see, there's some problem areas, and the major ones are up by the mall. T-Ticket Highway, 177 over three years with 33 injuries. And the other one was down here by, that's kind of by the rec center, had 100 crashes with 25 injuries. So we're looking at this data to definitely help us see where improvements are needed from a safety important standpoint as well. And we also know there was a couple fatalities as well, and the notable one was down here in this high-crash cluster, there was an actual fatality involving a pedestrian. So as we stated, we're looking at multimodal. So these are related to pedestrian and bicycles. And we're seeing the same story, the same intersections or segments that had problems during, on our previous slides with all modes. We're seeing, there's also trouble for pedestrians and bicycles. Again, up here by the mall, there was 33 pet and bike crashes, and down here, 10 pet and bike crashes. So we're seeing the same story over again. What's floating to the top are the worst ones. And this is just the final slide. The Cape Cod Commission puts out their top crash ranking locations for Barnstable County, and we noted those as well. And again, it was just kind of the same story. Falmouth Mall popped up at number 10, oops, sorry, wrong button, number 10. And this is based on EPDO, which is equivalent property damage only. So that just weights the injury-related crashes, so that those are, get a higher ranking. So there's some safety issues with these intersections. So as we can see, this is the area up on the mall, Maravista Ave. It's up, there's a lot of commercial curb cuts, it's kind of confusing area. And then we have, three of our study area intersections are on here, Dillingham at Springbars Road, Jones Road, Route 28 Jones Road, which is the one that's under construction currently. So hopefully, that will be improved very soon. And then the last one, actually, the Kuna Mesut Lights are actually rated number 51 on this chart. So Maureen's going to come back and go over some of the study area intersections a little bit more in detail about some of our field work we did out there.
Thanks. Yeah, so in addition to getting all the counts and crash data and previous studies that we could, we were actually out there in the field doing inventories of what the traffic control is and what the lane arrangements are, and also, as you can see from the base map, we're showing the traffic control. But then the insert is to show you how we have it modeled in our capacity analysis program in terms of what lanes are shown. And here, we're showing Dillingham Ave at Springbars Road. And just to give you a couple examples, now we're over at Locust Street, and here we are, over at Jones Road. So we have the entire corridor mapped out this way in terms of the details for each mode of traffic. These slides focus primarily on what's available for the motorists. As we start to look at what's available for pedestrians on the roadway, we've developed this base map to show us where the crosswalks are, where we have ped signals, you know, just any amenity that's out there today, we have inventoried. And what we'll be looking to do is to identify the deficiencies for each mode. So as an example, these are the types of things that we would point out, like where we're missing sidewalks, where we're missing connections, where maybe the signal equipment is outdated to serve the pedestrians. And then similarly, we will look at bicycle accommodations, which really, although you have some designated bike routes out there, there really are no accommodations for the bikes today. And we will keep looking to the studies that are being done to produce some bike amenities, and we'll incorporate that into our study. We also have a handle on what's available in terms of transit and bus routes. As you can see, mapped out here, we have the bus stops plus the bus routes in the area. We've gone out to focus on parking, mostly in the downtown area. So what you see here is, we've depicted the on-street parking and the public off-street parking lots. We're also showing in green where there's been some proposed seasonal parking. So we will look to see how parking accommodates the summer volumes and where the shortfalls are. And the last thing I'd like to touch on is we've started to look at the signage in the area, and we focus primarily on wayfinding signage, which basically is a system of signs that can be used for a number of things, either to direct people to points of interest, to provide some continuity along the roadway, or to point out special places in the area. So this is an assortment of what's out there today. So there is wayfinding signage. It's kind of hodgepodge in terms of what's out there. And as you can see from these pictures, a lot of them are difficult to read as a motorist. So we're looking to build upon what's out there and improve upon it in this study. And again, just to see, you can provide information, you can provide direction, and you can do placemaking with wayfinding signage. So we will be proposing recommendations on that throughout the corridor. So again, just bringing it back to the four tasks, we are straddling between tasks one and two right now, and soon we'll be moving into developing alternatives. We're certainly interested in hearing from the town, from the boards, in terms of anything else that we need to look at or might have missed, or if you'd like us to elaborate on anything that we presented, we're happy to do so tonight. But as we move forward, we're going to, you know, just pin down what those transportation issues are and begin to develop alternatives and solutions and recommendations. So with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say, I think we've got added value with Colleen. She lives with this.
Question?
Yes, Doug.
On your pedestrian map, they were showing little circles. I didn't really understand what the circles were indicating. Was that time of day?
Oh, pedestrian volumes, or?
Yeah, the little squares with the different numbers.
Okay, yeah. Let me get back to that one.
Right there, yeah.
What we're showing is where the people are crossing at an intersection. So for example, it's hard to say exactly which intersection it is, but...
By Library Lane, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this is as they're crossing along Route 28, and this is actually crossing from one side to the other, across...
I see.
So we should, yeah, I'm sorry, we should have explained that better. But that's like the four legs of an intersection, the four crosswalks, and how the pedestrians are moving through the intersection.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Sue.
I just wondered whether you've had an opportunity to look at this steamship expansion and to see what, if any, a fact that might have in the future.
Yeah, we are aware that they're moving, consolidating all the lots. We actually worked on that project to develop through MEPA with the ENF, so we're pretty familiar with what's going on. But we'll definitely keep that in mind, and hopefully that will lighten some of the traffic coming down this way. Thanks.
Anybody else on either of the boards? Julia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a question, if Maureen or Colleen could comment on how mass transit will be integrated into this type of analysis, our current situation, and potentially upgrades and enhancements to mass transit along this corridor.
Yes, so some of the things we'll be looking at in terms of that is, how much is it being used currently? Look at some of the ridership information. Are the bus stops adequately placed? Are they serving the people as a nice place to sit and wait for the bus? So we'll look at it from a couple of different aspects, but mostly like, how much is it being used? How could we encourage people to use it more? And does it serve its users well?
Thank you.
Yes, Matt.
I'm going to go back to the Steamship Authority for a minute. They have a plan to build a new parking lot on Thomas Langer's Road. And in the normal course of events, traffic would likely go down to Route 28 and through town, through the hospital lights there, the Jones Road interception. And that's quite a few hundred cars, and that's already an intensely traveled corridor there. So I just wonder if that's on your radar screen and can be included in your plan? If that is really the best way for that traffic to go, or maybe there should be some other route that the Steamship Authority...
I mean, that is the, kind of, that road is classified as the top level, as a principal or urban arterial. So that's kind of where you want that road to, the buses to be on and can handle it. You kind of don't want it snaking through your downtown and stuff. So we're definitely aware of the relocation effort, and hopefully that's going to deter more of the single occupancy vehicles. However, the buses still need to get down there, and we're aware of that. And we're definitely looking at that intersection. That intersection, you know, was upgraded, and it works pretty well. It does have some, in the peak hour, some issues, so we'll definitely make note of that, though.
Yeah, and we'll include that added volume when we're analyzing for future conditions, so.
Very interesting presentation. Well, the four tasks, will you be coming back again with some preliminary thoughts during step three?
We haven't discussed this as a team, but we're all nodding yes. I think probably ideally the next best time to come back, if you want us at this point, would be when we're straddling three and four, when we know what the issues are and we're beginning to develop the alternatives. You know, because we could present what our thinking is at that point, you could give us some input, and that could help us fine-tune our final recommendations.
That'd be great. Thank you.
You showed the traffic peaks for Randolph, and there was this blue, and we're very different from that, in that we were always up during the day hours. Is that because it's June? And with that, I want to put in a little caveat here, is that schools in Massachusetts don't get out until late in June. I don't know when in June that was taken. July and the first part of August are most likely our busiest periods. So is there something about Falmouth that no matter when you would have done that study, we'd have always had peak travel then? Or was it something to do with this maybe the beginning of summer traffic?
I believe they were done towards the end of June. I don't think that, I know it was like in the 20s, around there. So it could have straddled, it was last summer, so there weren't that many snow days, I would think, last year. So it could have straddled when school versus people coming out. So it could have straddled when school versus people coming out. I'm not sure of what the 24-hour volumes are like during now. There probably is more of a dip, but I think Falmouth in general, because it has, especially in this area, has a lot of that commerce, you're probably going to still see busy people are coming down here for lunch during the day as well as shopping. But the turning movement counts that we did to all of the study area intersections, those were done during July and August, so those are really capturing, and those are the volumes we actually use when we're analyzing future improvement. So those will be really accounting that worst-case scenario.
And, you know, we were showing those, the typical peaks versus what you have. I think what it lends to is how you want to approach your improvements, because there are situations, you know, maybe not in Falmouth, but there are situations where as a designer you'll say, well, we're still at Level Service E, but that's only for the one hour. We can't use that approach here. We need to improve because that's the course of the day over, you know, maybe not as much in the winter, but in the summer, that's, you know, six hours of the day that the volumes are that high. So I think it just lends us to strive for higher level improvements.
Part of the reason I'm asking the question is because of the demographics here, which would be different from Randolph. And we're an elderly community and becoming more elderly. And it would stand to reason to me that you're going to see during the major part of daylight, central part of the day, you're going to see that traffic of people going out and about. So that was one of the reasons that I'm asking this. And also, it has to do with the next question I'm asking, too. To what extent, what is your timeframe that you're looking at for the planning into the future? As best you can gaze into a crystal ball and say, well, okay, here we are now, but we presume that we are going to be there in, say, 20 years?
Yeah, we're looking at a 10-year build-out at this point, which will identify preliminary alternatives, but the end goal is that after we're done, then these recommendations will go into another study specific to that improvement for that intersection, maybe then again, maybe look a little further and modify that a year. And we're working, we're going to adjust the traffic volumes over a 10-year period and make sure they're appropriate. That's kind of a typical horizon period. You kind of don't go too far ahead unless it's going to be a major infrastructure, like a new highway interchange that you need to make sure is going to serve for a longer period of time. That's where we're working at, is going to, so 10 years will be 20, 2024. So we're also going to recommend short and long-term improvements, so things that can be done right now and things that need to be done to accommodate the 10-year growth.
Great, thank you.
Pat? Are there also options to consider seasonally adjusted solutions? Something that would be in effect for three months during the summer, but not in effect for nine months of the non-summer, those kind of options that can be considered?
Yes, yeah, we could consider those kinds of options. We've done that in other beach communities.
Kevin?
I'm just curious, based on your experience with traffic improvements, where we should set our expectations? If we're really at the C or below now, will we see ourselves at a high C, a B? Where do you think we should set our expectations for the improvement in service?
Well, in terms of vehicle Level Service, generally, reaching Level Service D is acceptable in this type of environment. You don't want a design to Level Service A because then you've got a lot of pavement out there that's not used a good portion of the day. So, you know, we'd want to take all those intersections up to at least Level Service D. Better if we could, but that would be what we'd strive for.
Doug?
Can I ask a question about the truck routes? You showed the truck route continuing on Locust Street down towards Woods Hole, but on the other section at Davis Straits, it sort of dead-ended. Wouldn't Jones Road be considered a truck route?
Yeah, that map was just based on what was available from state. There is no truck exclusions within the town, so essentially, the trucks could use that as the connection, probably do.
And if we come up with a plan that's sensible, would it sometime in the future be something that would be available online somewhere for truck drivers to reference, to know, to skip Main Street unless they're delivering there?
Yeah, you know, truck exclusions are really tricky. Like, every town wants them. There's a whole set of criteria that you have to meet. You have to have a parallel street that you're willing to send them on within your town. You can't, you know, you can't pick the parallel street in the next town and make that the truck route. So this is the beginning of that thinking. We're just starting to think that out. But just, I just bring caution to the truck exclusion route, that it is, it's difficult to enforce, it's difficult to get it mandated, because there's tough criteria to set up. But this was the start of it. Let's understand what the routes are now and where there's a desire for exclusions, and then let's see if that's feasible.
Because I think we have talked about potentially excluding Main Street. It's so difficult with the parking along those sides, the narrowness of it. If we could potentially do that, I think. Ralph?
Yes. Do you ever use bus drivers as a source of information about how to get easily from one place to another that have discretion? In other words, the bus drivers that drive athletic teams around in the afternoons, if you ride on those buses, they'll take you places you didn't even know about. And you get there quite easily. Obviously, if they're locked into a schedule where they're picking up children, that doesn't count. But when they want to go from one place to another, they know how to do it, and they've been doing it for years. I was just saying that that might be a possible source of information for you, the bus drivers that drive the athletic teams around from town to town and so forth. And the other thing is, I'm not sure if I heard you right, but studying is Falmouth's middle name. And I believe the statement was made that after you analyze these intersections and come up with solutions and so forth, that you would then hand it off to another study.
Yeah, we probably should have used the word "design."
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry to interrupt. We probably, rather than say another study, they would go into a design phase where they would be further analyzed.
Thank you very much. And I know you're going to make a lot of people in this town very happy by clarifying that.
Yeah, and to be honest, I've worked on a lot of master plans for towns, where we usually just do the transportation element. This one's different in that the whole study is the transportation element, but our focus has always been to leave a list of action items that are doable. Rather, you know, the report is nice, but it sits on the shelf, but we want something that's a document that's going to move on and progress is going to come out of it. So that is our personal strive, as well as what I'm hearing from you, in terms of coming up with solutions that are practical, doable, lay them out in terms of what's the highest priority, what you should do in the short term and the long term in terms of your improvement. So we will, we will work to give you a document that's workable and livable and takes you to design, not to another study. And I love your suggestion about dealing with the bus drivers, so we will work with the town to see if we can reach out to those people.
Well, there's regional buses, bus companies that drive all over the Cape.
Yeah.
And those would be the ones I'm sure you could possibly...
Yeah, that's an interesting idea. I like it.
Pat?
The Locust Street and the Woods Hole Road, obviously, is the main road to ferry, and that's used by trucks mostly. And over the years, the size of the trucks and the use of brakes, like jake brakes, has been a real issue for the people who live there. Have you ever had requests to deal with jake brake signs on roads that, such as the Woods Hole Road? Do you ever incorporate that in your plans? Because we've had problems getting the state to agree that jake brake signs ought to be, or could be placed on that road.
I personally haven't dealt with that, but we can certainly look into that as part of this study.
That would be very helpful. I think the residents would be very appreciative of that consideration.
Yeah, thank you.
Other comments? I agree with you. I live three houses off of Woods Hole Road. Are there any other comments or questions?
I've got one.
Yes, Paul?
One of the concerns I've noticed downtown, particularly where the traffic pattern is, is that at times there's three trailer trucks parked on the sidewalk next to the library, unloading for the restaurants and stores along Main Street. That appears to be a big problem many times. I know there's not room behind Main Street for those trailer trucks, because it would be land acquisition and so forth, but that appears to be a major problem, particularly on, say, Fridays in the summertime.
Okay, good to know.
Which probably isn't picked up on your studies.
Right, yeah. That's the kind of input we definitely want.
That's why we're kind of hoping maybe we can do something to control trucks on Main Street, but these are, as Paul pointed out, delivery trucks. And I don't know what to do.
Yeah.
Pardon?
Beer trucks.
Yeah.
And one more point with regard to that. Dillingham and Catherine Lee Bates, that's a continuous road that runs parallel to Main Street. And so when you're counting the traffic on Main Street and counting the traffic on Jones Road, you're missing the stuff, all the people that are cutting through on Catherine Lee Bates and Dillingham.
Okay. A lot of people do that.
And it's a lot. Not that it's bad, but it's just part of your numbers.
Peggy?
I'm just kind of curious, have you worked in any towns that they have regulated the time that the larger trucks that are delivering products? That it starts either after 11:00 at night, or it starts before 5:00 in the morning? Do you know any towns that have used any type of process that you regulate the time that they come in for their delivery?
So Colleen and I have worked on numerous Cumberland Farms projects, and we worked on one in Falmouth, and we've heard that done in other towns. Usually it's...
Is it assigned to that site?
Well, the difficulty is, it becomes an enforcement issue. So, you know, if you could do it through zoning, to me, that would be a better solution than if you could do it site-by-site, because if you, no. All right, we're going into uncharted territories. Yeah, I mean, what I've seen in towns is on a site-by-site location, and the downside of that is just that it's an enforcement issue.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I guess before we close it, what I would like to ask both boards, with what you heard tonight, is this heading in the direction that you expected when the study was initiated? With what you are seeing tonight, how they're collecting the data, and what we've been told they're looking towards? Is there any comment in regard to that? Because they're looking for direction, and it seems to me like if there's some kind of data that's missing, or you don't understand what it's heading towards as far as the final product, now would be the time to say it, because we would be, again, meeting between the third and the fourth, right as they're heading into the final. Sam?
Madam Chair, the only thing I would like to see is, are some optional solutions. So we have, you know, a few options for any given intersection where there's a problem with number of crashes and accidents and bike activity and that sort of thing, so that perhaps we can pick the one that we think best fits the culture of the town.
When you were talking about the bicycle traffic, and you talked about the ease of
using Main Street, I ride my bike on Main Street, and I don't, I think it's very dangerous. The parking forces, the sidewalks can't be used by bicyclists because they've got pedestrians on them. The bicycles are usually traveling closer to the speed of the car. And that's the, it's pretty, there's no room, it's pretty hairy in there. I just see that as the most difficult, although it's true when you get further out, you have to deal with faster cars, but it's pretty bad on Main Street. Cars weaving, and bicycles weaving in and out, you know, that's a pretty dangerous area.
And drivers opening their doors.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. Yeah, it's that balancing, trying to assign the street space to every mode. Right now, it's, you know, the motorist is taken care of enough, and after that, it's whatever's left. So it's trying to bring amenities for the pets and the bikes to the forefront, or will be some of the solutions we'll bring forward.
When we did the improvements to Main Street, and we did the traffic slowing islands that come out every little bit, those could be really deadly if you're riding along on a bike, and all of a sudden a big truck comes and you're going along, and you're cornered right into it, there's no place to go. I mean, it traps bicycles.
The curb extensions, yeah, right.
It can catch you at that point.
I know, as a planning board, we've thrown around, maybe we ought to eliminate parking on one side of Main Street, and it becomes a bicycle route, but that would get us killed.
Funny, because that thought went to my head, I'm like, I'm not saying it.
Doug?
I like the fact that your study seems to be geared towards pedestrian safety, as indicated by all the numbers that you had there, and I see those couple of trouble spots. I think that we have a problem with signage and notification at crosswalks, that there's some kind of new technology for crosswalks that would be possibly a flashing red light or something to make those more noticeable?
There's actually a lot of new technology for crosswalks. There's something called a hawk signal. There's also, what is it?
Rectangular rapping.
Thank you.
Flashing beacon.
Where the sign actually lights up as a pedestrian comes into it. There's in-laid lights in the pavement along crosswalks, so, you know, if someone steps into it, the lights in the pavement flash, it helps for nighttime crossing. There is a lot of new ideas out there for crosswalks, though. We will, we will look at those all and make some recommendations.
Good.
I think you should look at, in all the high-traffic areas where there's a lot of accidents, especially pedestrian, look at the lighting in those areas, because I know where the one area was the fatality, I was present, it's a pretty dark night, somebody just walked off the sidewalk into the street.
Yeah.
And if there was better lighting, it might not have, you know, I think that the high-traffic areas probably need to, I don't know how you light it differently, but there seems to be, to me, I think there's some issue in the lighting as well.
Okay, thank you.
Bob?
Right now, we have two major intersection projects going on in that corridor, and I was just wondering if you've been in touch with the state and the results of their study, and why they're making the improvements they're making? Because I hope your recommendations would hopefully jive with what is actually being done, so we're not redoing something later on.
Right, we want to build off of what's being done. We don't want to, you know, start over on anything. I know Colleen mentioned the functional design report that we've already reviewed.
Yeah, that's for the stop-and-shelf lakes. The other one's Davisville, that's out of our study area, but they are doing similar things. We have the plans, we have the report. So far, like, once we get into our improvements, it seems they're going down the proper, they're following the new mass stop regulations, they're incorporating multimodal, they're making the pedestrians, so we now cross, right now, there's no push button for pets at that intersection, that that's coming, crosswalks are coming, bike lane, or bike ridable shoulders, wider shoulders are coming at that intersection. So it seems like they're going down the path and addressing some of the safety issues as well. That one, I think, had a high-crash problem as well, and it's a very congested, busy intersection. So we definitely have all of that info for that intersection.
Pat? Is there any way that we can extend it to include the Locust Street bike path intersection as part of this presentation? I mean, just if we can make, that is an intersection I know is not really part of this, but is so close, and would love to have a solution as to what we can do with that, with the bike path and Locust Street crossing each other, or Woods Hole Road at that point.
Is it possible, Doug, that some of these that they're talking about right now could be just lifted and put down there? Like, some of the proper lighting and the flashing signalization, that sort of thing? Because that is highly dangerous there. And there is coming down that hill from Woods Hole to town, there's signage, but people don't really pay attention to it, it's just one of those things, you get used to it, you don't really see it. So I think a lot of what they're doing could be lifted and put there. Pat?
One last question from me. I've heard it said that if a town has a vibrant bakery and a vibrant hardware store, they will have a vibrant downtown, and we happen to have that. And it has made our downtown very, very successful. But we do have the issues of parking. We have, we don't have parking meters, and we have a number, even of business owners who park on the Main Street all day while they're in their business, and some of their employees park there all day. We've tried to come up with ideas. Sometimes people say, well, let's put the park... Sometimes people say, well, let's put the parking meters back. We used to have parking meters, but they came down in the mid-'90s. And we really don't want to put up parking meters, but we'd like to have some way in which people could park on Main Street. A lot of the businesses are really 15-minute businesses where you could park, go in, do what you need, do what you have to do, and then you're gone in 15 or 20 minutes. And then other parking is for restaurants, so sometimes you want to be there for two hours. But the selectmen have been discussing this off and on for the last couple of years and with a lot of suggestions being made, but I'm wondering if Main Street parking is included in your reviews and some suggestions for how we could improve that.
Yes, it is, yes.
This is the kind of thing I was trying to elicit with that question that I threw out to people is, is this headed in the direction that you want to see? And I'm presuming, and you should never assume anything, so that's why I'm going to ask the question. At the intersections where there is a high rate of accidents, will you be investigating the reason for that high rate of accident occurrence? Because there may be multiple reasons, there may be one really important overriding reason that would make a difference in what you're recommending, I would think.
Right, so where we look at the accident, at the crash data, it's kind of a screening process. So like you said, first we go through, we find out where there's the most crashes. And then we say, well, where are the most relative to the volume at those intersections? And that's how it goes to our high crash rates. But we have those crash reports, so we will go back and see, is it, is it always somebody trying to turn left at the signal? Maybe they need protection to turn left. We will look for common causes of accidents and where we develop our recommendations for improvements.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I have one final comment, picking up on what Ms. Flynn had said. If you look at the parking lot north of Pagnon and Park and just west of the library, and if you go there in the summertime, say at 7:00 in the morning, the parking lot's full. People are not working yet, they're not shopping yet, they're not at the restaurants yet, so you got to conclude they're probably parking there and maybe walking over to the ferry bus. So if you look at that parking lot at certain times in the day, there seems to be a lot of overnight parking there.
We were, we're actually planning to meet with the town officials to talk about exactly how to do the parking. We have a whole list of questions on parking and we want to get some input from them on what's going on with the downtown. So we are at the point of developing how we're going to address the parking. So this is, this is all helpful. Trying to get to my parking slide. There it is. So is that what you're talking about? Yeah. Yeah, we'll be able to talk more on the parking next time we're back. We're just getting into that element and studying it.
Is there anything you can do from a planning or design perspective that would make it safer in the solar glare times? I travel Main Street early in the morning sometimes and there's some times where you can't see the crosswalk. It's east-west and the sun's coming right down and the people in the crosswalk, you basically have to stop at every crosswalk and look around. It's only for a short period of time, but it happens at the Locust Street bike path, you could be totally blinded there. And all the crosswalks on Main Street at various times throughout the whole year, early in the morning or in the afternoon, there's so much traffic, it doesn't matter, but early in the morning is when there's, you can't see for that one section. I don't know what you could do about it, I'm just asking, is there a solution for that?
Yeah, I mean, that might be a location for the, like we were talking about the signs with the flashing lights that go on when somebody enters the crosswalk.
Right, that kind of thing would do it, yeah.
Where the situation changes when someone's in the crosswalk. We could look into that.
But it happens along that whole stretch of Main Street, you know, sunrise and sunset, particularly more people out in the summertime, early, and the sun could just totally blind you just for a few minutes, but it's pretty bad.
Yeah, that is, that is a bad situation.
That graphic you have there shows that parking lot I was referring to right in the middle. The one to the left of that, that parking lot, that appears to be the 30 spaces that the Bank of America has on their property. And they've cordoned that off and they put signs in, no public parking there, so you may want to look at that.
That's Eastman's.
No, that's the part where-
That's what?
Eastman's.
Oh, Eastman's. Okay, the one next to it is bank parking and they don't use it, but they don't want anybody in there.
That's the empty lot to the northwest.
We didn't, we purposely didn't put any private parking on our graphic. We're really looking at just where you're directing people to park publicly.
It's between those two.
Okay. Ralph?
Yeah, for the benefit of the public, could you just remind everybody who commissioned you to do this and the funding, where the funding came from?
I might have to deter on the funding, I'm sorry. We were certainly commissioned by the town, but I'm not able to say the funding off the top of my head, I'm sorry. Thank you, Brian.
Don't worry, you'll be paid. The town issued a request for proposals, Ralph, and for the benefit of the public, went through the town manager's office. The funding for this comes from your chapter $90. These are reimbursed by the state, so your town dollars, you appropriate them every town meeting. Most of those monies go towards maintenance and roads, but a portion can be used for studies. Goes to MassDOT, Colleen and Morgen talked about, you know, this study that goes on to what's known as a project need form, goes on to a project information form. So they allow us to use some of these state transportation dollars to do planning that will lead to design studies.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from either of the boards? And I would like to, I'm not, this is just a discussion between the boards here tonight listening to the initial data report. I would like to encourage if anybody who is listening here or in our viewing audience has any comments or questions, that they get those to the planning office, preferably via email, because then they can be forwarded on to the consultants here on this, very readily forwarded on. So I would like to encourage you to take advantage of what you've heard tonight if you have any comments. And please try to get them in, I'd say, within the next week or two, to be able to be forwarded. So, thank you. Yes, Pat?
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Crosswalks. We have a lot of crosswalks, I think, at Falmouth, and it's always a problem at night. Sometimes if cars are parked on the street and you're, there's a crosswalk, you know, in between two cars. I know one town at one time was considering a new type of crosswalk where it had lights on it and when the pedestrian stepped into the crosswalk, it lit up. You didn't really see the lights, they were kind of on the surface. Are those ever in use anywhere or are they kind of-
Yes.
They are?
Those are in use, yep. The disadvantages of snow plowing, sometimes you have to replace the lights, but yeah, that's a solution that we could consider, that's definitely.
Thanks, I just wondered if they were used anywhere.
When I went to UMass Amherst and they were used a lot up in the town of Amherst, so they're currently in use.
They're really quite effective, I would think. Yeah, in where my son lives, every other street there's a stop that has a pedestrian crossing and they have those lighted strips along there. So it's really quite effective. It might be a really good idea here to do that kind of thing. Anything else before we close this off? Thank you so very much. And I hope we do get additional comments from people who are listening tonight, that if they have any questions or they have comments that weren't covered.
Thank you for the opportunity and the input. We really appreciate being able to present to you and we look forward to our next discussion with you.
Great, we will too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, second on the agenda, we have the Local Comprehensive Plan, the Housing Element Goals and Policies from April 2015 Town Meeting. And we all were sent these, we're just looking at the goal and the policies right now and hoping to get the selectmen's approval because they have to recommend these to town meetings. So hoping we'll get the selectmen's agreement that they will be recommending these to town meeting. So it's really in your ballpark here because this was looked at by our board and was passed by our board as it is. So you have three options. You have, okay, we like it just the way it is, or gee, we want to tweak a word or two here, in which case, as you know, with town meeting, it will be as recommended, or you could say, eh, we don't like any of it, we're going to IP it. So what are your comments on these?
Shall we read them?
Oh, I'm sorry, of course. Thank you, Doug. Okay, the goal. And I probably should give my little spiel that I give because there are a number of new selectmen here too. I get so tired of repeating myself multiple times, I think it's boring, but anyway. The whole idea for the Local Comprehensive Plan, for those of you who haven't heard this little bit before, is that we are a committee of three, a subcommittee of the planning board. We've been working quite diligently and I will say that the effort has been going on for multiple years and the committees have formed and dissolved. We are making very good progress on this finally and we're moving really quickly ahead. The whole idea of the Local Comprehensive Plan with the goal and the policies is we are looking ahead at minimum 50 years and preferably 100 years, best guess, as to what we might see. These are, one could say, sort of feel-good because the town meeting has to vote on the goal and the policies. We are trying to keep each element with one goal and preferably three, maybe four policies that fit under that. And the idea is that the policies will encompass anything that we can foresee as an action item into the far distant future. It's not as hard as you might think it is because if you work with the wording sufficiently, and we are very carefully working with the wording, it can accommodate way into the future. If you look at one of these, okay, we'll allow and encourage the market to create multiple housing opportunities that allow for more choices. That can easily go 50 to 100 years. That problem's been there since 50 to 100 years before where we are right now. So we're looking at the policies with that in mind and we're looking at the goal as something that is really all-encompassing and gives our real overriding direction into the future. In this case, Falmouth shall meet housing needs of everyone in the community. To have a healthy community, you have to meet those housing needs. You can't just meet the housing needs of the wealthy, you can't just meet the housing needs of the poor, you can't just meet the housing needs of the elderly, you really have to look at the community as a whole and say, how can we meet those housing needs? So now we get to, let me read it so our viewing public can hear this. "This is the housing community goal in public policies. Falmouth shall meet the housing needs of everyone in the community." That's the goal. "Policy one, Falmouth shall allow for greater infill residential density where appropriate." That's the important clause in that one. "Policy two, Falmouth shall allow and encourage the market to create multiple housing opportunities that allow for more choices." Use your imagination on that as to what that might mean. Way into the future. "Policy three, Falmouth shall accept responsibility for providing housing for people at all stages of life and all levels of income regardless of mandatory state statutory requirements." That says, this is our responsibility to provide for our community. We know our community and we need to provide for it as best we possibly can. Doug?
I like what's being said, most of what I have to suggest is a little bit of wordsmithing. First is, as you read it, you restated that the first thing was the goal.
Right.
And I actually would put that in words, say, goal, colon.
Oh, I usually do that, Doug, I'm sorry, this is-
Right, but in the text, I would actually have it say, the goal. And the other thing is, the word shall just is no longer becoming common English usage and I would use will. Falmouth will meet the housing needs of everyone in the community. Technically, shall is the first person plural, has a future indicative, and shall is the future imperative. We're just not using it anymore, I think it's just more confusing, and I would suggest it just goes clearer and people understand, Falmouth will meet the housing needs, will allow for greater. And the last is that comma before all levels of income is unnecessary and actually doesn't fit grammatically either.
Okay, you guys-
We put those in there just for you, Doug.
You guys can rewrite it, you like what it says. No, you have to because it's your recommendation. So you would have to say, okay, what we're going to do is knock out the word shall, put in the word will, and knock out that comma, and that's the way it goes into the warrant as recommended. And that's what, if you like what we've done here, that's what you will do. Sue?
I have a little bit of a broader perspective. I think that your overriding statement, which is Falmouth will meet the housing needs of everyone in the community, is a little status quo. I might consider adding a look to the next 50 years, which would be something along the lines of, and encourage housing development to support the sustainability of the town or something along those lines. Because I think meet the housing needs really addresses the present, which is important, but I'm not convinced that the reason, you know, for this document is not really to look to the future. So I think that your overall goal should say something about looking to the future.
I guess I had already been a future thing because right now we are not meeting the housing needs and we're not going to for a while. Our goal is that we will someday meet the housing needs of everyone in the community and that's what the goal is.
And my guess is we're not ever going to meet the housing needs of everyone in the community. I would hope we would.
But that's our goal.
That's our goal, that's why it's a goal.
But I want to attract people so that the town will be sustainable. Maybe it's a younger demographic, maybe it's jobs creation, that's really the concept I'm looking toward.
I could see that more as a policy.
I could see it as a policy too.
As a policy as opposed to a goal. So I think that could be a policy number four.
Right. I think the way we look at that is the goal is something that's just overarching. It takes account of everything. The policies become a little more specific and the action items really is where the rubber hits the road. So I think when you add that into it, it becomes, as Bob says, on a policy level. But if you want to change it, that's up to your board to do the recommendation if you want to change anything about the way this is written because as you know, it's already been submitted for the warrant. And I'm going to back up just a little bit on this. I would apologize that we have not had the opportunity, I think would be the way to put it, to meet with you as we did with resiliency. Because I think that resiliency and the economic life of the town and the housing needs are probably the three most important elements for the life of this town now and into the future to have a vibrant, sustainable town. The others are, yes, it makes our living so much nicer that we have recreation, that we have open space, that we have the arts, these sorts of things. But if you don't have a good economy, your town's dead. If you don't have housing that meets the needs of all the people, you don't have a vibrant, lively town. We keep reading now how the water level is increasing, the sea level is increasing, how storms are becoming more violent. We've seen that over the last couple of years. Well, resiliency has to do with, we know things are going to happen, how do we plan to come back as a town when a disaster of one nature or another happens to us as a town? That's the life of the town. So in my estimation, those are probably the three most important elements. So tonight, we're starting the conversation, which all things being as we might have wished they would, we would have started this conversation way back, right after the Housing Roundtable took place. We had already done a- We had already done a lot of work on this, but guess what? You know, we had town meeting, we had Thanksgiving, we had Christmas coming into here, and then we had multiple snowstorms that shut us down. So this is just starting the conversation right now. But because it's on the warrant, it's in your hands as to, well, is this acceptable the way it is? Or do you want to see some major changes in it? Or do you want to see, as Doug said, let's get rid of the word shall and use the word will, which is not a big change? So that, it really is in your court. Sam?
I just want to thank you for this, because I think it actually is a really good start. We may be able to do some minor changes to it, but I think you really covered this need rather well.
Thank you.
And I really think it's something, I have no problem standing behind it, because I believe that it's essential that this town does get this into focus and begin to respond appropriately.
Thank you. When do you need to have your recommendations to the warrant? Because that, you'd have to have your conversation on this.
Monday.
The 16th? Monday? Oh, okay. Yes, Jim?
One of the things I wanted to just point out to the public, it's different than the prior years. I know some of the people have come to me about the local comprehensive plan and all the details in it, and how come this is different than last. We've, Pat's kind of guided us to try to really streamline our local comprehensive plan and make the goals and policies something that has a very, very long life, that we all can agree on, and have the interchangeable parts be the action items, which eventually wind up as warrant articles at town meeting, they get completed, and then they move on and a new set comes in. So when there's a group out there that they're saying, well, you know, this is what we should be doing, our plan was to design goals that would, you could say, well, yeah, what I want to have happen, what we think happened fits in there, and how it would get actually done is an action item that would be brought up in front of the selectmen, go on, become a warrant, be given to some other department in town to take care of, get completed, and another action item come in and take its place. So that's just an overall philosophy we've had on this approach. It's probably different, I think the last time, they just threw everything in there. And we're trying to really keep a much smaller document, really focused on goals and a few policies, and really pushing everything out as action items. We have that conversation amongst ourselves over and over and over again, and I just wanted to share it with people here.
The process that Jim is referring to is, I guess you'd say, we throw things against the wall and see what sticks. And then we start sorting it out as to what reaches the level of a goal or doesn't, and you'd be surprised, or maybe you wouldn't. Not very much reaches the level that we could put as a goal. What reaches the level of policies? And again, not a whole lot does, but when we do this thought process to see that which sticks, a lot of those become action items, and they inform us when we're creating the goal and the policy. So it's an iterative action on our part. It's a lot of fun. We have a lot of fun looking to the future on this, because we are all really focused on the well-being of this town. And when I say, I don't know that we'll ever meet the housing goals, I didn't mean that to be contentious. I'm saying our housing needs will always be changing if we are a vibrant town, because our population will always be changing, as it should. Like, if we're talking about the economy, we're hoping in some way to lure younger people back into town. Well, that's going to take an economic base that we probably don't have right now. It's going to take a type of housing that we probably don't have right now. So once we get that, it'll change again. So we're looking at changing needs. This is why we want this to be a living document, and why we're trying to be very judicious and broad in our choice of goal and priorities, because those have to be voted by town meeting. And as Jim said, what they lead to under the action items most usually will have an economic base or a zoning base, and that goes before town meeting for action. So the citizens of this town, not only in the vote of the goal and the priorities by the town meeting initially, will have continuing input into what we are becoming as a town. Pat?
I agree with Doug. I like the word will, better than shall. But I'm going to read one again, and then read two and tell you what my thoughts are. Falmouth will allow for greater infill residential density where appropriate. Second one, Falmouth will allow and encourage the market to create multiple housing opportunities that allow for more choices. My question is, allow. If Falmouth will allow, does that presume that the planning board and the zoning board are going to agree to this, to more infill, more density, multiple housing, the creation of multiple housing? When you use the term allow, it's sort of preempts, I think, what planning or zoning might do. So what was your thinking in using that word allow?
The thinking is more for the town not to get in the way, because we hear over and over how the town makes things very difficult for people to get things done in here, and we don't want to do that. We don't, we want to allow different things to happen in town, that we're not going to curb those efforts, that we're going to actually help and encourage those efforts if it's going to meet some of our goals, that we want to see met.
That's why we use those words.
I like that, yes, from that perspective, yeah.
Doug?
And one of the things we picked up out of the housing study, needs analysis, was that we don't currently have a lot of multifamily housing, and it's something that we need, and we've discussed this, and the planning staff is working on developing a plan for multifamily housing zoning.
So allow is different from permit. Allow is a more widely interpreted term, I guess. So that does make sense.
Could be more like encourage or...
Yeah.
Create a zone where it's allowed.
Right. Okay. And that goes way into the future, too.
Yeah.
It meets the needs. Also, I need to point out that under our current comprehensive plan, the element was called affordable housing. And as you know, when we did the housing study, I really said, no, because we're looking at the county definition of affordable. Uh-uh. Who can afford $1,100 to $1,200 a month rent if you are a clerk in a grocery store? No, we're talking much broader needs than that, than, because you could get confused. What's the official definition of affordable? What's really affordable? And I know Judy Barrett heard exactly that as a problem. So we're looking at this, how many people do we really have in need of those jobs to fill? That's where we start getting, and what is their real capacity to pay exactly what for housing here? That's where we get into the action items. So we've got a long way to go on... Providing housing.
In the third policy statement, I'll read it again so everybody knows what we're talking about. Falmouth will accept responsibility for providing housing for people at all stages of life and all levels of income regardless of mandatory state statute requirements. How do we do that, regardless of mandatory requirements? I mean...
We're referring, in this case, we don't know what the future might bring, but we're referring, in this case, to the 40B, where you have to have 10% of your housing state-mandated, otherwise, they can, the state can come in and say, you're going to accept that there whether it's good for your town or not. We're saying, in our decision process, and I probably, I need to let you guys talk on this, too. In our decision process, we can't be pushed to doing something that's not advisable for the town. Doug?
Yeah, we want to beat the state to the punch, essentially. We want to do what's best for our town and not be dictated to by the state. And with the different entities in town that are for housing, I think we can do it, and there are things in the action items that will address some of those.
Doug, thank you. Now, if you look at the action items, you can see exactly where we're headed. We're not discussing that necessarily tonight, but they were put in here so that you all can see how the goal and the policies flows down into potential action items. And I'll make a recommendation when we go on to the next item on our agenda here. But it's your turn to do what you want to do with this. And I'm hearing definitely that you're going to do it as recommended, if nothing else, than to take and get rid of the word shall in all instances, and put in the word will, and remove a comma.
And could you explain again on the regardless of mandatory state statute requirements? I guess I interpreted that as, we're going to try to do more than the state's recommending. As, but regardless means we're going to ignore what the state's saying.
Yeah. We're going to ignore what the state is saying, and we're going to do...
No, if the state tells us to do it, we will do it. But we're saying, we're going to actually take a step beyond what the state's doing.
Because we want to, right? Not because we have, not because the state's telling us, we're just going to do it.
On our own initiative.
Right.
Rather than being driven by it.
Because it is what is appropriate for the town.
And maybe regardless is not the right...
Yeah, I mean, put another word in there.
In addition to, what you're really saying is that, in addition to what the state's requiring, we're going to do more.
No, it's not in addition, because the state may say something that's not good for our town. Hopefully, they won't. But if you can think of another word that means we're going to do what is best for our town, whether or not the state is mandating it.
Could say irrespective.
Yeah, could do that.
That's not quite as harsh as regardless.
Right. There, take that. So irrespective. I like that.
This is kind of what we do on the committee.
Exactly.
I know, that's not really what we're...
And then we go back and change it to the word we used the first time.
We do that frequently, too.
On the second action item, which is institute a program to monitor existing housing units and enforce current conditions, consider consolidating the number of monitoring agents active in the town. And then you have as one of the action items, you've mentioned the responsible parties, board of selectmen, ZBA, town manager, town council. Wouldn't you add building commissioner to that?
See, this goes into what we need to do in the future with another meeting together.
Oh, okay.
Because that's what we did with resiliency way in advance, because when we had our joint meetings, we were getting your input on all of this, and we were changing those action items and getting your input, feedback on all of this. We just haven't done it on here, as I said, because of when we got the housing study and how it fell out, and it's time, really, to get this to town meeting, so that then we can work further and start working on these other things right away.
I feel that we're going to be able to vote a recommendation fairly easily on Monday night with a minor change.
I think so, too.
Well, I think we got it.
Yeah, and we have to.
But we can't vote it.
It has to be Monday.
I know.
Your vote. The only substitute suggestion from Susan was incorporating sustainability. We haven't really resolved that discussion.
No, we have not resolved that, yeah.
Well, that's up to you, but I think that gets into a little bit more detail under the goal than we want to have. And so whether you want to insert another policy or not, that's kind of up to you. I don't think it's necessary.
So we can take it on Monday night?
Mm-hmm.
We add this to Monday night?
They're all on.
What?
All the warrant articles are on Monday night.
Yeah, but they're for recommendations, right? But only the ones that we're going to recommend.
I just want to figure out if it's sustainability.
And this is one of them, yeah.
Sustainability.
Okay.
Do you two have any further comment about somehow putting the word sustainability in here? You're a real good wordsmith, you and Marlene.
I was wondering if in policy three, we could describe that housing, providing housing that is sustainable for people at all, you know, somehow describe the housing in that way with sustainable.
Providing sustainable housing for people at all stages of life.
That's exactly what you're talking about.
It's not what Sue was talking about.
I'm thinking of the, I think it was a police chief or school superintendent in Provincetown who said, yes, I'd like the job, and there was no housing for him. So to me, if you meet the housing needs of everyone in the community, that means all of us who want to live in Falmouth have a house here. That's all it means. It's not looking to attract a new police chief or a new, it's a stagnant goal. That's really my point. And I'm, as Doug just mentioned, I'm thinking that in the overview, we may want to look toward something more sustainable than just, you know, everyone in the community. So, but we can talk about this in...
That's kind of covered under policy three, though, in my, the way I read policy three. And remember, the goal wants to be about as broad as you can get it. Ken?
I want to make a comment on the goal, because we talked about this. Understand, the goal in this particular one, the town is not at our housing needs. We are not meeting it. So to add even more in sustainability, that was the whole thing, 50 years out, we still won't be at meeting the needs. So that's why the goal was so broad, to make sure you covered everything. And that's what I wanted to say about that. We're not there, we're not going to be there in 20 years, and we all know that. So, and that's why the goal was meant, so it would never change. We always want to meet the needs, whatever those needs may be. That could become an action item to, you know, make something to attract other people down the road. That's what the whole goal is. So I just wanted to make that up there.
Also, I would have to point out, too, that there are a lot of innovative housing options that are occurring in other parts of the country that we're not seeing here. Our common stick-built houses, individual lot houses, I don't think it's going to be where we need to be. We now are having micro-units. They're starting to put those into Boston and other cities. And when you're talking about cities, those are way expensive, but they needn't be here. And those are specifically built for young, single people. They're essentially what we used to call efficiency apartments. And they're maybe 300 square feet, some even less. So we may be talking about new zoning that will allow that kind of thing. That's why provide housing for people at all stages of life. And we purposely did not put the word affordable in here. That's implied when you say at all stages of life. But we put at all levels of income. And the reason I harp on that, we don't put affordable in, because there's that county definition of what's affordable. 80%, 60%. And that doesn't necessarily ring true for what we need in Falmouth, or maybe anywhere else, either. We're making our, the point is here, we're making our own decisions as to what's right for Falmouth. And I certainly appreciate how both boards are working together on this. Do you guys have any further questions as to how our convoluted thinking took place to come out with this, what's in front of you tonight? Yes, Becky?
What I'm going to say now, I'm not really sure that it's in policy or goals, but I think to say to you, and I've yet to hear it in a long period of time, is why the town of Falmouth and the towns that surround the base, and I always call it the base because it changes another name, so the base. If you look at any map, and you will see the canal, and then you see the tip of Falmouth, and then you see the rest of Cape Cod. When you look at that major piece of property, it's white on a map. It's just, it's, I mean, I've looked at it several times, and I thought, how many acres of land we drive by every day? And it goes from Sandwich and Bourne and Mashpee and Falmouth. And I think, when I look at it, the four towns ought to think about what we can do for housing in using that piece of property. And I know everyone in the world would say, you don't want to deal with the government, because those 50 years will be gone because you're trying to do that. But it's just, it's unconscionable to me to think that we have people who would come and put in the effort of working on the cave, and that piece of land sits over there. And I just want to give a little boost or a little shout to say, I'd love for someone to investigate that. Because everything we think about is, can they afford it? Do we have enough land for it? Should it go up three stories high? Should it be 300 square feet? And there sits all that land. So I don't know who's going to do it, but I have thought of many different times. It first came to my mind when we talked about wastewater. Now, I mean, I've looked at that wastewater plant over there and I thought, well, my goodness, they could take care of the town of Falmouth. So I think about it. It really bugs me that it is not used for a purpose and it is right there next to us.
It's protective of our aquifer, Becky. That open space is protective of our aquifer. So there are many reasons that it is as is.
There are a thousand reasons, because it would have been done by now.
Indeed.
And I understand, but I just want someone to come up with an idea of how all government regulations are being followed for 50 years and it just, it bugs me.
Now, there's, there has always been, since I've been on the Cape, there's always been a push to build up Otis. I'll call it Otis, because that's been Otis forever and ever and ever, okay? There's always been a push to build up Otis and there's always been pushback on it. Major defense reason. It's early morning.
I think just the fact that we, just the fact that we're dealing with the Coast Guard now. I mean, that's going to take 20 years. But if someone, someone, I just want them to walk in front of me and tell me, I'll bet we could do that in 10 years.
Jim, you wanted to say something?
One of the things, when, we did have a lot of discussion about where Falmouth could grow and where we could build. And one of the things that we decided, or recommended, I guess, is I should, wanted to discuss with you folks, and that's why we're here tonight, is we've, the appropriateness that we're, where, if you look at some of our land use things, we talk about growing in the villages, little nodes of our, of our villages we already have, along transportation routes, Route 28, that we already, already have, planned sewer lines that we're, that we're building now and that we're going to be building out for the next 50 years. If we start developing way, way out, then we're going to start putting transportation out there, we're going to put sewer lines out there. The linkages to all those places over that distance is hundreds of millions of dollars. So it's, so we thought if we're going to grow and we're going to be putting in more density and more traffic and more everything, we'd better be where we have the infrastructure to handle it. And that's.
An excuse.
That, well, that is, yeah, well, no, it's a reason. It's a logical reason of where you should grow and where you should.
I'm sure it's a logical reason.
And that, that was a discussion we had. I mean, that's about where to grow and why. And we decided that to keep it, there are growths should be in our villages where it historically has been, where the, where the transportation can grow and where, where the infrastructure is there and where we're planning to build more infrastructure.
Gotcha.
I've always kind of believed that the greatest creativity comes under the tightest constraints. And the answer in Falmouth has always been to build up, you know, go west, go north.
In the U.S., go west, young man.
I grew up in a town two square miles with the same population as Falmouth. Falmouth has, what, 44 square miles? So the answer isn't always just to go out and expand. It's to look at what you have and better utilize what you have. And what Jim said is, was a key part of the discussion that we had of creating greater density in infill residential. And that, the action items cover a lot of that, whether it's transfer of development rights or whether it's changing zoning, overlay districts and things like that. That's what we want to see. We don't want to have to keep expanding because every time you do something, it's taxes. People don't want their taxes too low. So this is a way that you can keep taxes low, you can keep growth at a moderate rate and without expanding and going in places that you don't really need to go.
Well, I didn't want us to go alone. I want the four towns to be involved in it.
Yeah.
I want, I see a different vision than just Falmouth doing an area of.
You'd be building new schools, you'd have a new center of town, it would change everything.
And right now, we're getting out of the scope of what we really should be discussing, which is the goal and the policy.
I just have a thing, so thank you.
So I think.
We have discussed that, though.
Well, I wish I was there then.
You should come to some of our meetings.
Yeah, that's, maybe that's the answer. I think we're okay with what you need to do on Monday night. And we're hearing is, okay, it will be as recommended. We like what you've done. We want to make a few tweaks to it and then it will be as recommended. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, yes, Doug?
So if they make some changes on Monday at, for instance, Policy 4 or modify the goals, do we then need to review it and come to consensus? Or is it just going to go right ahead?
I think it's their recommendation, so they can change it as they see fit. And then town meeting can vote it or not as they see fit.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
I think that's the way it is. And we don't know whether we want to include sustainability. My contention is, well, that's really kind of under Policy 3. The, the idea that Sue, I think, was trying to bring about. But that's their discussion as to whether they agree with that or not. Are we okay with this?
I, I just want to make the point that we're trying to make this whole document look as if one hand is writing it. So we have a format that we're trying to stay with. We'd appreciate if you make any changes that you stay with that format.
Yeah, the reason being, I don't know what experience that all of you have had that Bob is referring to with the LCP as it currently exists. I think one element is eight pages, another one is 40 pages. And what is a goal is put in as a policy or an action item. There's no consistency with how it was formulated. And we're trying to get this to be a really workable document way into the future. That just lives without this multiple-year effort to bring it in, to bring it to fruition. So, thank you for bringing that up, okay? Okay, so now we're going to move on to item three, implementation ideas to further housing goals. And I'm going to state right out, as I did, and I will reiterate it right now, that I think where we're headed is the kind of workshop that we had with the Resiliency. So that we get your further input, we get our boards fully, stand on your feet and talk and wave your hands around, input that's a less formal venue than we currently have right here. And we're not constrained by everybody's put in a full day's worth of work. So therefore, I'd kind of like to go to Saturday, but that might not be what anybody else wants. But those of you who are working on full-time jobs, you come here at night and you're tired and you look at the clock and you say, I want to go. Whereas if we meet on a Saturday morning, we're fresh, we can bring all kinds of things to bear on what we need to discuss about housing and how we want to look at this into the future. I'm going to use the word policy, but that's not really, I'm not taking the word policy here. I'm taking the word policy that you guys do when you say, this is what we want to do. So that the Board of Selectmen will look at it, okay, what we really want to do is, maybe we want to look in this, in this area for increased density. Now, how do we go about doing it? So it's a policy that both boards are working on to the future of Falmouth, not the policy the town meeting has to vote on. I don't know if I just made sense or I shouldn't have used a different word.
No, I think you did, no.
Your board operates according to certain policies. Our board does as well. And that's what I'd like you to think about now, so that we can really start getting to the meat of this. So I'm looking for input on that because we're. Implementation ideas to further housing goals. That's going to take a whole lot of thought. Some of them are going to be the action items here, some of them, the action items maybe should be changed to meet what both boards would like to see. I think the best way to do this is to really lay it all out on the table and say, okay.
I'd like to have an in-depth discussion on some of the action items that we've laid out here. For housing, and I think it's something, you know, our boards need to go back and forth with and see if we do have agreement on it. These are put out as suggestions. Some of them are pretty, you know, can make things happen. I mean, if you look at the, the fourth action item, it's loaded with, it's got a new by-right overlay district that, that would be far more far-reaching and ease, much easier to use. By-right multi-family housing district, I mean, we, we don't have that. That'd be a big change. We want, we want to discuss that and review that with you. The change in the conversion bylaw, for those of people that aren't familiar with it, if you have a large house that was built before 1984, you can convert it to a four-unit house. It's a, you can make it into a condo by, by our existing zoning. But it's very limited. It has to be built before 1984. Do we want to ratchet that up to another timeframe? What kind of impacts will that have on our neighborhood? Will we get this through town meeting? These are all things that, I, I think we need to really dig in together and, and come up with some, see if in fact we, we do have agreement on it. And, but anyway, so those are some of the biggest things, I think, that can impact housing on action items that we, that we could, we could work together on.
If you look at action item one, let's call the workshop exactly that. Because we had, thanks to the Affordable Housing Committee, we had the housing needs study done. And action item one says prioritize the options and ideas found in the Falmouth Housing Demand Study dated October 1st, 2014, prepared by RKG Associates, and determine how they may be implemented. Now, the responsible parties are the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, the Town Manager, and the Planning Department. Those are who would be meeting and doing this workshop and really working through it and not only using that study by RKG, but trying to imagine more, too. So I don't know how you all feel about that. I'm looking for input on.
I think the Saturday workshop makes a lot of sense.
You what?
I think the Saturday workshop makes a lot of sense, it's time to do that.
I always like Saturday. Because you can just dedicate that time to it.
And then our professionals go, oh, we've got another day in the week.
But it's always, it's always worked well.
It has.
In the past, so people have always been able to come with very few exceptions.
And we'll look to you guys to provide the coffee and donuts as before. So.
Okay.
Go ahead.
This, in terms of the action items that are under consideration, will they be published on the website in draft form? Or maybe we could go announce some of the things under the consideration? Or does that make sense? It just seems that we have a lot of people interested in housing that want a better sense of the status after the comprehensive report that was, that Jim just referred to.
When we get your buy-in on, on that, after we have this discussion, then we should do it. I mean, that's what we're saying. We proposed them now, really as an example, but we're understanding that it's yours action items as well as ours. And we'd like to have that go through together with you and make sure it's your vision as well as ours.
Okay.
And we're not ready yet, it's just an idea.
The first action item, the one you just read, that's the follow-up to the housing study. And people are saying, when are you going to do something about it? When are you going to get to working on it? And that's, I think, the first step we need to take, is how are we going to take that housing study and bring the people together and come up with some kind of a plan? My other question is, do we have a housing inventory of, of the town? Do you know what kind of housing, how many multiple units or single-family homes or, do we have anything like that?
I think that was part of the report, Pat.
Property use code and Thomas.
Yeah, maybe so. And Annie's raising, it's in the report. I think it's important to start with that, to see what the inventory is, so we at least know what we have. And then begin to work toward looking at.
Judy's report, I think, spelled it out even in.
Yeah, it's been a while since I've done it.
There were population districts and how many are in each district and what the value was in those districts. Doug?
So, in part of our goal, we said, we're going to accept responsibility for providing housing for people who are of age and of life and level of income, irrespective of mandatory state statutory requirement. So when you look to the inventory of affordable housing, it doesn't really tell the true story of what we have or what we could have. And so part of our discussion and what Jim was just talking about is making it easier for people to have affordable accessory apartments. Right now, it's difficult to qualify because you need an acre of land and many other parameters. That won't increase our inventory as far as meeting our 10% goal. And we're, we're trying to take our eye off of that because we're never going to really get that anyway. But we can do effective things that make realistic housing options. Like people that are getting older, they want to stay in their home. They wish they could put an apartment over their garage and rent to some nice young man at my shoulder, drive away, you know? So there's a lot of options that we're missing out on because we're over-regulated. Those are the kind of things we're trying to get at, rather than targeting the actual state goals.
Or they move into that accessory apartment and rent the house to a young family.
Right.
We want to increase the options for people. And that's the kind of thing we need to talk about to see whether the town fathers and mothers want to have, adopt this sort of thing. Because it's all of us working together to accept it. And we do the zoning, but you do the kind of policies that are forward-looking for the town. So are we buying in as two boards to a Saturday workshop?
Yes, we are.
I think we are buying in.
Okay. Okay, and we, and we know that both calendars are fairly full, so I think we need to say, you guys, the four of you, need to get together and see what the calendars are, but hopefully within the next two to three months, we can get together.
Before summer, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's why I said the next two to three months. Because summer is outrageous to try to get people together. So we need to do it in, say, April, May, early part of June.
Will do.
Okay. Doug?
Can we read these, just so people at home know what we're talking about and considering?
We could, but I'd rather not at this point, because until we get buy-in, there, there may be some changes in here. And I don't want to.
It'd be a total scratch, you know, like, no, we don't want to do that, right?
Well, exactly. So I kind of hate to do that at this point in time. That's why when Sue said, are they going to be on the website? Not until we get enough buy-in to know, yeah, this is where we really want to be. Yeah, Bob?
Was Mary asked about the inventory?
Yeah, it's, it's.
Okay, it is on the page nine of the housing demand study.
But we need other information that isn't developed in there, too, I think. And that is, well, we know that the waitresses and the clerks have this kind of an income that we're looking at, average income. How many of them are there that we need to provide housing for that they can truly afford? We need to have those sorts of figures. Because I always hear, too, well, our teachers and our firemen and policemen can't afford to live here. What kind of cohort are we talking about? And what is a realistic affordable figure for housing? And so you can't build it assuming that that's affordable, but they really can't afford it. We need to know what we're talking about and how many of these that we need to provide at what level of cost. So there's more information that probably has to be derived. Yes, Sam?
Yeah, we also have to remember that we are a vacation community. And all of a sudden, rents soar, you know, from June through August. And I don't know how we control that because we're sort of kicking people out of their housing, you know, over that period of time. I think we need to talk about that issue and how do we protect these kinds of units for the people that are supporting our very economy?
That's part of our discussion that we need to have here. Because a lot of those people that you're talking about, Sam, get cheap rentals during the winter because somebody is renting the house out at very little money, just to have somebody living in it. And then come June, out you go. But that's, again, I think, an economic matter here. If there were truly affordable housing, and I keep underscoring truly affordable housing, I don't know that we'd have that problem. We might, because everybody wants to have a deal. But if we have enough truly affordable housing, then that's their risk if they truly, if they decide, well, we want a deal. So these are the kinds of things I think we need to discuss at that workshop. And how much, now I was going to say, how much control the town can have. Because one of the things we're looking at here, too, that I think everybody needs to understand is, we can't write this to control the residents. We can only write it as to what the government can actually do. So that's also underscoring what we can put into the plan. Because you can't say, well, okay, the business owners have to do this. No, they don't have to. No, they don't have to. They're private enterprise. Sue?
Just in, you know, looking at the crowd we have here, and in fact, one of the action items talks about, you know, implementing tasks and cooperation and communication. And there's an issue of stakeholders. I know people that have worked on this 10 years, and I know they had input into the study. But I'm trying to think about ways that there could be, you know, additional information put into our discussion in terms of people that are, you know, that have been the backbone of housing for years. I know we have, you know, various committees. We have multiple committees that deal with housing. And I think one of the issues is, you know, how do the agendas move forward in a swift and economical manner so that all the stakeholders get considered? And I'd just like a little bit of discussion on how we work that into our summit meeting on housing or whatever we want to call it.
We can talk about it, but a list was put together that was handed out to everybody tonight. And if you look at the private nonprofit or quasi-governmental agencies here, that's pretty much what you're talking about, I think.
That's what I was talking about.
And we don't have control over them. They're independent. They have their own agendas as to what they want to do, need to do, their bylaws, their governing bylaws. So as far as the comprehensive plan, you know, we can and have had input on the Housing Roundtable. There's been a lot of input on Judy Barrett's study and on the Roundtable itself. We've had that input. And so what we're looking at here is what can the government do and make happen?
But the workshop is going to have to be an open meeting.
Yeah, it is.
At which they can certainly attend, and we could even invite people in these organizations to contribute to the discussion.
Yeah, it's always an open meeting.
That is just a question.
And when we decide that these action items go forward, they become a warrant article that gets discussed at both boards, public meeting, input. That's the real opportunity for the public discussion when we decide to bring it forward. And then through the process, there's open meetings, public meetings, discussions at both first with us and then with you.
But I just think with Sue's point is there's information, knowledge, and passion that's out there that we would love to tap in.
We understand that.
As much as possible.
Exactly. We understand that. As a community, we have to be firm in where we'd like to go to. Because we can't have a real scattershot sort of input that gets ... Becky, off-topic, let's develop Otis, okay?
It's going to happen.
Yeah, and we want to be able to be more efficient than hugely broad in the research.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a copy of that to some of our housing people over there. Can somebody just give?
Oh, sure.
Have you seen that? It's just a summary, an outline of ...
Is this the right one? I don't want to take something that's supposed to look at.
It says that it gives a listing of the town agencies. Oh, I'm sure you can get it from the planning office, too, or the selectmen's office.
The different housing groups. Because this is something we have to consider as we move forward, are all of you that are at the ground level, making all of this stuff work, so to speak.
And this is not an official document as much as just a reference guide.
No, this is just a guide, a draft. It's even in draft form.
Well, we're talking about ...
We may have left somebody out.
When we talk about government, we're talking about the Planning Board, the Board of Selectmen, Affordable Housing Committee, Zoning Board of Appeals, Community Preservation Committee. These are the government agencies, if you will, that what we're doing here, we're trying to influence into the future. And as I read off the private nonprofit or quasi-governmental, then we have the regulatory tools. We know the Chapter 40B. We know the local initiative partnership. We know the by right development. That's affordable housing without the need of a comprehensive permit because it meets the town of Falmouth zoning. Then we have financial tools that are available for housing development, and that is the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, the Community Preservation Fund, the disposition slash donation of town land. All of these are controlled by different, I think I have to call them bylaws, that they have to comply with, and they're different in their goals. So to try to incorporate everything into what we're calling the housing element, I don't know that we can do that. These are private. A lot of them are private or semi-private. So I'm not sure that we could really do that. What this is, is a guidance document. I'm waving the wrong one. This is the guidance document for the town to look forward into the future and what the governmental agencies can actually do to bring forward housing as we need it. Yes, Doug?
What will be very helpful and valuable will be their input as to what, how we prioritize the action items, their feedback as to what is stopping them from being active.
Correct. When we say, okay, we've got to streamline the capacity of build, I'm paraphrasing something here, then we need to reach out to the developers, saying, what specifically is holding you back about how we do business as a town? We can't do anything about their problems except insofar as we can change how we do business as a town government to be able to encourage the market to allow for certain things. That's what we can do. But we can't muck around in their business to make it happen. We can only make it easier for these things to happen as a government. So did I draw enough of a distinction here?
Pat?
Yes, Ralph?
Right. Under the private nonprofit and quasi-governmental organizations, you could add Habitat for Humanity.
You're right. Okay?
Because the three people at this end of the table
You're right.
just ended up building two units for a year and a half. Also, are you planning to invite all of the bold-faced people on this little draft reference guide sheet? Is that as going to be invited to this?
No, to the workshop?
To the workshop?
No. The workshop would be like Resiliency. It would be the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen. But it's an open meeting. So although we are the principal contributors informing how we want to go forward, it's an open meeting. But like we have with open meetings, I wouldn't want open-ended grandstanding, I think would be the way to put it. What they have to say would have to be quite concise, to the point.
Well, the Affordable Housing Committee and the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Community Preservation Committee seem to be, have more expertise and more involvement in housing than any, than the Planning Board and the Selectmen.
In housing.
In housing, yeah.
Brian, your guidance on this. And your guidance on this.
If the two boards, two elected boards want to get together to implement your first action item here, we will structure it for you. And you're listening to the Selectmen, and they want the stakeholders, and I think we support the stakeholders are there, and we'll structure a workshop that gets to their input, if that's your ...
That's fine.
I'll try to ...
Right, I know, it's getting late. But my point is, it's a discussion, really, for the two boards to set the go-ahead policies. And that's why, I'm sorry, I probably used an unfortunate word when I said grandstanding. But sometimes our meetings can get shanghaied. Yes, Sam?
Yeah, and to support that, it seems to me we can invite input prior to this working group meeting, if you will, so that we'll have other people's input to digest ahead of time and inform our decisions or the direction we may choose to take as a result of that.
That's a fabulous idea, actually, because it gets it perforce, concise.
And there might be segments of the agenda where we might want to have some of the people who are more involved in housing to even make a presentation.
Absolutely.
Something like that, which would be helpful.
So now I think we're back to publicizing what's under consideration so that they know the ballpark of what they're being asked to contribute to.
Well, are you talking about publicizing the action items?
The draft.
The draft action items.
The drafts, exactly.
Do you make sure everyone understands when we close it that these are draft or discussion purposes?
Have to be.
I mean, if you want, I'm happy for our board to say I have buy-in to them all being ideas worth discussing.
Right, that's what they are, ideas worth discussing. That's what, not policies, they're not things where it's said, this is what we're going to do.
But I've looked at each one and said, yeah, I can understand discussing that.
That's all it is.
I could say, we're going to refine it or change it. But, I mean, if you need our board to buy in that far, I think we could do that to make it be publishable.
The way we saw it was that if we had agreement amongst the boards, then there would be a proposed bylaw, hearings, you know, open meetings, everybody comes in, have all experts, whatever, that there's an opportunity for that. It'll happen, it definitely happens at all Planning Board meetings, and I think it happens again, even when we finish it and package it up and bring it to you. I think you open it back up again for them to come in. So there's two, I think they get two more bites at the apple. We're not trying to exclude anyone. We're just trying to just bring it forward.
I think putting these on the website as a draft would be very useful for everybody.
However, you have to understand that our committee of three do not have jealous ownership of these action items. Because I look at them now with some space and time, and I'm saying, well, maybe it should be stated differently. Maybe it should be thrown out in preference for something different. But we didn't have the give and take here on this. And it's just the way it went, seasonally and time. Brian? You're waving. Oh, that's just nervous waving. Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. So you all will get a date together that we can meet
And we'll discuss it with the ...
We will.
How we want to handle the announcement of what is being discussed. And yes, I think that's a wonderful idea, Sam, of having written input coming in that we all have, too. Because as you pointed out, all of you pointed out, there is so much interest in this issue in the town. But we want to do it as efficiently as we can, too. After all, we're talking about one Saturday morning. So, okay.
Three hours?
Yeah. So, yes, Bob?
I see not just discussing action items or taking them up, but looking at the executive summary and just going through the key issues. Those should be major topics of the agenda as opposed to one specific action item.
That is an amazing report.
Because we have to get through this to get through the action items.
And we did, as a committee, I think. We were looking at that as a base for what we produced here, too. So, God, we're going to have a lot of homework before that Saturday meeting to go over to be fully prepared for this. Okay, so let's move on to Item Four, Authorized Submittal of Open Space and Recreation Plan. I don't know how many of you know or remember, because I have to be refreshed every time, too. The Open Space and Recreation Plan has to be looked at, excuse me, every five years. And the planning staff does that. The Planning Board voted this, that it was fine for submission to the state. And we're looking at the Board of Selectmen to say, yeah, it's fine for submission to the state because in order to get potential available funding from the state for open space and recreation, we have to have this plan submitted to them. So there you go, you guys, on the vote.
It's what's on the draft, it's on the website's draft right now, right?
Yeah.
It's been there for a month now.
There's a draft supplemental area. For disclosure purposes, the draft of the plan is actually sent to the state, and we have some conditional approvals. You can actually apply for land grants or park grants and actually get an award, but there can't be any disbursements until the plan is actually finalized. Part of that process is we pass it along to the Cape Cod Commission, that's now the Planning Board, that's now the Board of Selectmen, and make sure that the elected boards, the regional agencies, and others have buy-in. So that's the purpose of bringing it forward here to the Planning Board and to the Board of Selectmen. But there is actually a conditionally approved plan with the state, so we can move forward on those grant applications, but subject to your reviews.
So I think we take this up on Monday, do we not?
Okay.
I believe.
Certainly.
Unless you feel totally confident and you just want to vote it without having read it tonight.
I think we want to do that.
I think it's on for a vote tonight.
I don't think so.
You what?
Tonight or Monday?
I know, it's up to me.
Has to represent. Could conceivably vote tonight if you're so inclined. Has to represent.
Well, it's up to the board. Are you so inclined to vote the Submittal of the Open Space and Recreation Plan?
I have looked at it online, so I am comfortable with it, but ...
Yeah, I looked on it. I can't say that I read every word. I just didn't have the time. It's quite a robust document that my hats are off. But I see it also as a plan that gets evolved over time. And what I read certainly is a great foundation as far as submitting to the state as a prerequisite for, you know, applying for certain grants. It's quite an impressive document. You know, I asked for a hard copy, and they said, are you sure? Why don't you try it online, which I did, but I didn't have time to go through it word for word. But I mean, it's an exhaustive document, and I think it's, in looking through it, it's actually excellent reference. And I have no qualms at all voting tonight, just submit it as a draft to the state.
Well, if you're comfortable voting for it tonight, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'm moved. A second?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Wow, that was good.
I love that.
Okay, Item Number Five is Other Business. Anybody have anything other?
I have adjourned.
More coastal resiliency discussion.
Yeah, see, we've got to keep that going.
You have to keep that going.
I was very serious when I said the economy, the housing, and the resiliency are, I think, the three most critical elements we have to keep in mind. Heather?
Well, it's just a good reminder of the conference that is going to be held next week, the 12th and the 19th in Webner on the storms mark and how to respond to storms. I know at least one member of the board is, it's 12th tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah, I signed up.
Thursday.
No, Thursday. It's Thursday. I signed up for that. And they moved it, by the way. It's going to be at the Mashpee Library and not at Webner, so.
Is registration required for that?
Registration is required, yeah. Because I got an email today, because I registered, saying that the venue had moved to the Mashpee Library, so if you're going, that's what I'm saying.
I registered, and I didn't get anything.
We're talking about the same ones.
Yes, you are. Yes, it has been moved.
So that's this Thursday?
Yeah.
Oh, geez. I thought it was Thursday.
Nine o'clock, I think.
Wait a minute, that's the first one. It's two days, Thursday, Friday, correct?
No, there's two consecutive Thursdays, the 12th and the 19th.
Okay, so we're talking about both Thursdays.
That's why I didn't have it on my calendar.
The 12th has been moved to Mashpee, the 19th is still scheduled for last night.
Okay. Great.
It's nine to three, I think, isn't it, something like that?
The 12th is 9:30 to 5:00.
Oh, to 5:00.
The 19th is 9:00 to 4:30.
And which one is moved, this week?
Yes, the 12th.
Tomorrow.
This is the one on, this Thursday is the one that has to do with the mapping.
Yes.
The second one has to do with what we function, the planning. Yeah, that's the one that really intrigues me.
Because I had something else to do this week.
Yeah, so did I. And I thought, what? Did I mess my calendar up? Okay. Anything else that anybody wishes to bring up tonight? Yes, Sam?
On that coastal resilience, I would just encourage everybody to go back and do the studies that we've already done for both the coastal management of the Buzzards Bay coast as well as the south coast of Falmouth. It's actually a really good piece of background as a starting point for looking at possible solutions or regulatory changes that we might consider to look at long-term sustainability of our environment.
of our environment.
And this is where both boards have to work, to make certain changes happen. We have, I think sometimes we have to play an if-then game. If this happens, then what is, how is the town going to respond? Because when it happens, it's a little bit too late.
I agree.
So opportunities for more meetings. Okay.
I move you to adjourn our meeting.
Second. Second.
Thank you all.
Good meeting.
Thank you all.
Five seconds.